Call to order, the December nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting of the North Andover Planning Board. Jean, could you take a roll for us, please?
Sure. Chris Cassars.
Here.
Sean Kavlan.
Here.
John Simons.
Here.
Aton Gohar.
I'm here.
Peter Boynton.
Hi.
Gemma Wilkins is absent tonight.
All right, no Gemma tonight. All right, bond release, sixteen hundred Osgood Lot A, Hillwood Enterprises LP, request for release of a thirty thousand dollar performance bond, associated with a site plan review special permit and a modifications site plan review special permit.
So, the special permits allow for the rehabilitation and redevelopment of the site described as Lot A, as well as installation of a large-scale ground-mounted solar system. The approved decisions in the Lot A as-built plan are included in the meeting packet. The electronic version, if anyone noted, did not include the engineer's stamp, however, I have the stamped copy in the office. Mac Atzie, Vice President of Development for Hillwood, tended to be here tonight, but he was somewhat ill and couldn't make it. So this is just the office building component of the redevelopment of sixteen hundred Osgood. Parking lot improvements, demo of the back building, mechanical equipment replacement, all the work's complete, and it has been for quite some time.
Looks good down there. Okay. Got a motion to approve the request for a release of a thirty thousand dollar performance bond.
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's approved. All right, new public hearings. Two-twenty Sutton Street, Two-twenty Sutton Street LLC, application for limited site plan review under Article Eight, Part Three, Site Plan Review, and Article Ten Administration, Section one ninety-five, ten point seven, of the North Andover Zoning Bylaw. Applicant proposes conversion of former northeast rehabilitation space to a daycare facility. The proposed suite consists of four thousand four hundred square feet. The site is located in the Business Two zoning district.
So the proposed site is an existing building located at the corner of Sutton Street and Charles Street. No changes to the exterior of the building are proposed. The interior renovation includes construction of half walls, a half door, along with other requirements. The name of the daycare will be My Little Friend Building Preschool. The existing tenants in the building include Bueno Bistro, Restaurant, Best Cleaners, and Northeast Rehabilitation Facility. Because it is an existing building with no proposed change to the building footprint, waivers are requested for things like easements and legal conditions, topography, zoning information, drainage maps, stormwater management plan, building location and elevation, location of wetlands, refuse areas, lighting facilities, and utility plan. Information regarding the estimated traffic flow is within the application and is in a presentation that will be presented tonight. Child drop-off and pickup procedures are also described in the application materials that will be presented. A letter from the building inspector deems the use falls under the Dover Amendment. The daycare facility is planning for nine toddlers between the ages of two and three, twenty preschool age, four-plus years or older, and seven infants two-plus months old. One hundred and twenty-nine parking spaces exist on the site. One hundred and twenty spaces are required for the various uses. The one thing I'll note and the applicant can speak to is no outdoor play area is shown on the plan as it exists today. So Alex Matsis is here as the applicant to present.
Good evening, everybody. Name's Alex Matsis, as Miss Enright is introduced. Charles Construction Company, located on the street at two hundred Sutton. As she said, we propose a new daycare facility of forty-two hundred thirty square feet roughly over at two-twenty Sutton at the former northeast rehabilitation suite. Plans, I believe, are right in front of you. The modifications to the existing suite primarily just include some thirty-six inch knee walls to divide some spaces, and we're going to be upgrading the fire alarm throughout. We've brought on RP Architectural for the architectural side. They have submitted stamped drawings as well as controlled construction affidavit, along with McCabe Associates, who presented a building review, as well as a fire alarm plan with the controlled construction affidavit. There is no outdoor play area because they aren't going to be doing any outdoor playing.
Where's the, can we go to, is there, to me, the drop-off, pickup, parking is probably what matters the most? Is that, where can you point to where that is in the application?
That's included in the narrative here.
There, I think that's it, right there. Drop-off's going to be staggered from seven-thirty a.m. to nine a.m., as well as pickup, and I believe that's three-thirty to five p.m., just to mitigate any traffic.
So the way the application describes it is they'll park in the parking lot, they'll walk the child to the lobby area, they'll sign in on a mobile app, staff will bring the child from the lobby area to the applicable classroom, and the reverse happens at the end of the day, so.
So is this which of the, is it the middle?
Correct. You recall, there's Best Cleaners and, what's the other far end? Bueno Bistro.
Yeah.
Northeast Rehab used to be in the middle of that area. They have moved to the end cap of the building, and this is proposed to be right in the middle.
So it's in the middle. So...
So the shaded area here, Gemma.
The, I guess my initial inclination was along Uten's lines is pick-off and, you know, pick-up is, and what, a little bit, all the parking there is flat up against the walkway. I mean, it's enclosed parking, and you're right, I mean, in front of the cars literally going into the sidewalk. Are the people, I mean, I just wonder, are you taking any special steps to mitigate that? Are the people likely to park directly in front of the building and back in parking, you know, daycare, just kind of in a tight spot?
I understand as how the pickup and drop-ups describe is that before the students or the children arrive, they have to check in, in which they will actually come out, take the child, and bring them in. Now, I'm not sure...
But where are they, I guess what I'm saying is, again, it's, I don't want to overly complicate it, but people will come into those spots right next to the, you know, they'll come into the ones right next to the building, it might be right in front of the building, and they'll get out there, right? Is that where they're likely to do it?
I believe, I have not walked through the procedures, but I believe that would be the intent to mitigate people standing in the road or blocking traffic.
So there's angled parking as you drive in from Sutton Street, and there's, you approach a sidewalk between the building and that angled parking, and then there's all this parking past the building that...
Yeah, I know there's tons of parking pads. I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, I just get nervous with that really in-tight parking in front of the building. A kid darts out, I mean, a kid goes on the other side, there's not much room for her there, whereas most other daycare places tend to have a little bit more open space. I mean, I don't particularly like to do this, but maybe you need to have at least one open space there to see, provide more visibility or something. I'm just thinking out loud, but...
I mean, I'm looking at all the, it looks like all the spots have little bumper things at the end.
Stops?
Yeah, it looks like they all have stops, which is helpful. Yeah, I mean, that, again, what I'm saying, I don't know that many people are going to go to the back to park for this, right? You're going to park right in front, go in, and where they're little kids, you don't just leave them, so you're going to go in, and it's going to take ten minutes or so, and most, it is going to be a lot at the same time. So, but again, I also don't know that there's...
I mean, most other ones here I've seen is there's a little bit more room from the front door of the place to where the parking is, so that you actually have a little bit more visibility. What I, the thing I worry about is, what if a kid goes on one side, and he's supposed to get around to the other side, and he walks into the walkway?
And you also, also think about it too, is that there's, based on the plan, there's thirty-six potential drop-offs, so there's nine, they're planning for nine toddlers, twenty preschoolers, and seven infants, right? If they're all individual, it's thirty-six.
They can also do a drop-off line, if that would assist.
Yeah, I just think there, and again, I'm not trying to overly complicate it, but it's, when you have angled-in parking like that, right next to where they come out, is you could have a kid run into the space, and then the mother says, get to the other side, and they go out the long way and come back in. So they're just, I think the issue is really buffering the kids from the, through traffic, is, that's the big thing. And whether you do it by staggering it or something else, I don't know, but that, that's the part that would concern me.
Would it be an option to restrict the parking to have to use the main parking field past the building? So no daycare parking along the angled?
Not sure that would, like, in a bad day or something like that, practically speaking, I don't think it would work, but it's, I mean, again, I'm thinking out loud here, you know, maybe the best approach is to limit the number of people coming at any one point in time, so that you have more control of it, because if you have people coming into three or four cars at once, all right next to each other, you could have a little bit of contention there.
The good thing about the pickup and drop-off times, between seven-thirty and nine a.m., as well as three-thirty and five p.m., those are typically slower times for the building, except for the rear where Northeast Rehab is, which won't be an issue. Lunch at Bueno Bistro, that's going to be over, dinner crowd hasn't started yet. Best Cleaners has to reserve spots already, where people can just come in, drop off, pick up, so that whole area should be...
Would you have dedicated spots during the day for the daycare?
That would be, to me, be up to the building. But it'd be definitely something...
That would be something I think that might be helpful, is if you had reserved spots.
Yeah, there's certain times.
Right, correct, correct.
For pickup and drop-off?
For pickup and drop-off. I mean, I think staff should park in the back, and there should be reserved spots for pickup and drop-off. And that way, at least, you're mitigating some, right? So that, if there are four or five spots, then that's going to, most of the time, take your need. If every once in a while someone has to go and walk, fine, but I think, I think that would be, I think that would be ideal, just, just for the pickup and drop-off times.
Yep, for the safety of the children.
Yes, I mean, that, I mean, everything else about this is good, because you have, you already have a designated parking lot, it's, it's in an area where people are driving by all the time, it's not going to really add much to traffic, it's a good location, we definitely need childcare, so all of that is good, and you're not remodeling any of the outside of the building, not interrupting any of other people. So I think that, everything else is good. I think we just, when we get these ones, we really try to focus on the safety aspect. Okay, any other questions, comments? Any members of the public that wish to make any questions or comments? Jean, any comments that we've received?
Nope.
Okay, how does everybody want to go about, we do have a draft decision. Do we want to go forward with that and add in something about dedicated drop-off, pickup spots, or do we want to?
Okay with that.
Yeah, everyone good with that? Okay. Okay, so why don't we look at the, why don't we look at the, at the decision now, and then after that, we'll close the public hearing. Would, do you anticipate any problems if we put in a condition that there be dedicated pickup-dropoff spots?
Do you have any issues with designated spots for...
Just during the time period?
Other than the...
And if, I mean, it goes with the permit, those would obviously, hopefully this business goes well, but if it's, you know, if three years from now, it moves somewhere else, or is not in business, obviously you don't have to keep those spots for...
At least those spots, yeah.
Right, you know. Okay.
Yep.
Okay, should we, do people want to dictate a number of spots, or just say that there shall be reserved parking?
Let's give a little bit of flexibility that Jean can, you know, decide, I mean, you know, if you say four, and it should be six, or you say six, and it should be four.
Yeah, so I wrote four to six, it was my thought. So four to six dedicated pickup and drop-off.
Okay. All right, can we get a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Can we get a motion to approve the limited site plan review permit as amended?
So moved and as amended. Second?
All in favor?
But, but that's, I just want to know, there's no bond, there's no special conditions for the most part, other than the plans change?
That's fine, right, because it's all interior.
Okay, so we got Sean Kavlan, and who's second? John Simons?
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. Good luck. All right, one eighty-nine Willow Street, Vincent Grasso, application for site plan review in Corridor Development District One, special permit under Article Eight, Supplementary Regulations, Part Three, Site Plan Review, Article Sixteen, Corridor Development District, and Article Ten Administration of the North Andover Zoning Bylaw. The applicant proposes the construction of a six thousand seven hundred seventy-seven square foot single-story building with twenty parking spaces, associated driveway utilities, and associated improvements. Project is located within the Corridor Development District One zoning district.
Yes, sir, I'd like to bring up a procedural matter that...
Uh...
I'm going to butter.
Okay, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. So let's, when we come to, I'm going to open the public hearing.
Well, we shouldn't, because I didn't receive notice as a butter, so it's not the open.
Okay, all right, well...
It's a process.
Okay.
Can't be fined over Jean in the hallway because of meeting taking place.
All right.
To be notified by mail.
Hold on, you got to stop, you got to stop. I, I'm aware of the rules, but let me address them during...
There should be no meeting.
Okay, well, you can, you can raise any objections, and your appellate rights will be noted for what they are, but I'm going to open the hearing. At least, one eighty-nine Willow Street, Vincent Grasso, we have the application. Jean, why don't you give us an introduction, and since it has been at least raised, tell us where in our packet we might find information about notification.
So, can I just state for the record?
Yeah.
This is Scott Hazer, who is an abutter to the project.
Okay, he'll definitely have a chance to, to speak. We're not going to do it until we actually open the hearing.
Okay.
All right.
So, as you may recall, the applicant applied earlier this year for a site plan review in C V D One special permit. The public hearing opened April twenty-fifth of two thousand twenty-three. There were a number of continuances granted until ultimately a request for withdrawal without prejudice was made on November seventh, and the planning board granted that. The site plan proposed is very similar, however, the building footprint was reduced approximately a thousand square feet to six thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven square feet, and a reduction of a thousand square feet in the scope of area to be filled. The location of the proposed building has been slightly modified, so that it is now just outside of the twenty-five-foot non-disturbed zone. The site is three point three four acres and is an undeveloped parcel of land. In two thousand five, the site was granted a special permit to allow for the construction of a proposed three-story office building, approximately seventy-two hundred square feet, with garage underneath to be used as a ground floor. The property was then zoned Business Four, it is now C V D One. Water and sewer stubs were installed to this vacant lot in October of oh-eight. A two-inch copper line was installed for domestic water use, a six-inch ductile iron line was installed for fryer sprinkler system, and a six-inch PVC line was installed for a future sewer connection. There is an existing access driveway constructed across the wetlands. The site topography is relatively flat, with bordering vegetated wetlands surrounding a portion of upland that was previously disturbed under the aforementioned previous permits for the site. Portions of the area disturbed, which are in the center of the lot, have developed into an isolated vegetated wetland. A notice of intent application was filed with the Conservation Commission on November eighth of twenty-three, and the hearing was noticed in the Tribune for a December fifteenth hearing, as indicated on the abutter notification contained in the N O I and prepared by Hays Engineering. However, there is a requirement to open the hearing within twenty-one days of the application filing, unless the applicant consents to an extension of this time. Although asked to sign the voluntary notice of extension a couple of times, Hays Engineering did not respond to either request, and on December fourth, twenty-three, Hays Engineering served the commission with a copy of their appeal letter to D E P that stated, as of the writing of this letter, twenty-two days from receipt, no hearing has been held by the N A Conservation Commission. Hays Engineering further asserts that the N A C C has scheduled the matter at its December thirteenth hearing, thirty-five days from receipt. Hays Engineering, on behalf of the applicant Vincent Grasso, argues that the Conservation Commission has failed to hold a timely hearing, and a superseding order must be issued. The commission opened the hearing on the thirteenth. Neither the applicant nor his representatives, representatives attended the meeting, but an abutter and a member of the public were in attendance and spoke, expressing their concerns and questions about the project. Without a request for consent from the applicant to continue the hearing, the commission was forced to close the hearing. The commission must render a decision within twenty-one days from the close of the public hearing, and therefore schedule a special meeting for this item on Wednesday, the twentieth, tomorrow night at five p.m. A superseding order would review the project under the state requirements, but not the local bylaw requirements. I have since heard that the Conservation Administrator is awaiting a letter from D E P, essentially stating that they are not granting the appeal or dismissing the appeal for the sequence. Dismissing the appeal for the superseding order, and my understanding is she's drafted a denial letter for the application for tomorrow night. Stormwater runoff for the proposed pavement areas will be collected by a drainage system consisting of a sediment forbey, water quality swale, and extended detention basin. Note, the applicant's request for the stormwater management peer review was delayed. They actually gave me the okay on Friday. Today, I sent the information to the stormwater peer reviewer. She indicated she won't be able to begin the review until after January fourth, which the applicant has communicated. They understand that, given the holidays. An escrow account has been funded. Traffic impacts are detailed in the application, and again, will be included in a presentation. Waivers have been requested for the scale of the plans, a landscape plan by, signed by a landscape architect, grading and drainage plan per the applicant. The site is sufficiently described due to the minimal scope, with a single proposed site plan identified in grading, drainage, and utilities on a single sheet. The provision for site topography at two-foot intervals, per the applicant, the flat topography in the center of the site is better representing using one-foot contours. It should be noted that the plan, resource area notes state portions of the site are located in the flood zone A, per FEMA NFIP flood insurance rate map dated July third of two thousand twelve. The current published maps are dated two thousand and eighteen. Also, the general notes indicate that the boundary, topographic and utility information depicted hereon are a result of an actual field survey by Hays Engineering in October of twenty-two. However, conflicting notation is included in the existing condition plan sheet and the proposed site plan sheet, which states the plan is not a determination of property lines or zoning compliance, not in its purpose to depict existing or proposed structures, features, or boundaries relative to property lines. The plan is sealed by a professional engineer as it relates to the location and relocation of fixed work embraced within the practice of civil engineering in accordance with provisions of two fifty C M R five oh one two, et cetera. The application information requirement for the survey is for a survey of lot slash parcel, a boundary survey conforming to the requirements of Essex County Registry of Deeds. The existing condition plan is not stamped by Land Surveyor. The notes included on the plan should be clarified. A photometric plan is not included in the application, and snow storage areas are not yet shown on the plan. Department review comments have been received from North Andover Fire Department, Police Department, D P W Operations, Building and Health. The building inspection, inspector cautioned that the proposed twenty parking spaces could limit uses in the future. The multi-tenant building proposed uses are for professional slash business office and professional service.
Okay, so let's do a couple of things. Let's talk about the notification issue first, then we'll talk about conservation and what's going on there, and then we'll get into the actual presentation. So, I'm looking at page one thirteen of the application, which has a list of abutters notified. Sir, would you mind coming up, just, I just want to get your name and address, so we can check this? Everyone, why don't you come up to the podium there, if you don't mind. Can you just tell us your name and address, please?
My name is Scott Hazer. I live at one seventy-six Cara Drive. My wife and I own the property at six fifty-one Turnpike Street, which abuts the applicant's property.
Six, okay, six fifty-one Turnpike Street, owner Linda Jalbert.
That's right.
Uh, address one seventy-six Cara Drive. It is on the list as getting notification.
And how would we receive notification?
I believe it's by certified mail.
Certified mail has to be signed. We weren't doing to get it.
I'm just, I'm just saying what says here. Is that, that's how it's done, right?
Yeah, certified mail, oftentimes, they leave a note once, if the homeowner's not there, to pick it up at the post office.
Right. I can't speak to whether you officially got anything or didn't get anything, I'm just saying, on the list for notifications, whether it did not come to you, was not signed for, I don't know, I can't say.
If you want me to go down and review the project file, we'll have the stamped certified mail from the post office.
Right.
As proof of it being sent. That'll be downstairs in the office, if you want me to go get it. Otherwise, I can include it in next...
Yeah, we don't need it for tonight, we're going to keep going, but we'll look at, we'll look into that. We do have the list of notifications, and we do have that as, at least as an address, so we know it was identified. Okay.
Usually the mail's pretty trusty, especially certified mail, that's all I have to say about that. Usually, we sign for the, our mail that gets sent to us.
Okay.
It's very odd.
All right, well, we'll see what we can find in the file. Okay, next thing, is, so we got a little history about what's going on with conservation. Do you want to, why don't you introduce yourself and tell us from your perspective what's going on in conservation?
Eric Lane from Hays Engineering. We submitted a notice of intent to the Conservation Commission. They failed to have the hearing within twenty-one days, so we filed an appeal with the D E P, and we have not heard anything back. I don't know, you know, that's news to us, and we're waiting to receive comment from the D E P.
So you've, but it seems like in your notice, from what I can read, you filed a notice to have a hearing on December thirteenth.
That date is provided by the Conservation Commission to be put in the notice. They still have to have a hearing within twenty-one days?
I know, seems like, seems like it was filed with the anticipation that there wouldn't be a hearing in twenty-one days, since they didn't have any meeting scheduled within twenty-one days, and the notification in the paper that was put out is for the thirteenth. Seems to me that's acquiescing to the fact that you're going to have a hearing on the thirteenth, and seems calculated to try to get around our wetlands regulations. So, that's not a great first step or impression. So, we'll continue on, though, and we'll have to see what happens with conservation. As you, I'm sure, know that if we were to permit this, that you would have to comply with, usually our requirements are to require, to comply with local wetland regulations and the Conservation Commission, as well as any D E P regulations, and it strikes me as somewhat disingenuous of how we're getting to where we are, and the fact that conservation may deny it because they opened the hearing on the thirteenth, doesn't leave you in really good standing here today. Nevertheless, we are here, and we will hear evidence, both from you and from anyone else who wants to participate. So, why don't you tell us about what you're proposing, how it's, since this is a new hearing, just go from, kind of from the beginning.
Sounds good, thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
The project planned tonight is a resubmital of a site plan previously appeared before this board. Project is located within the Commercial Development District One, requires the following permits. A site plan, special permits required under the town zoning bylaws for the construction of a new building with greater than two thousand square feet of gross floor area and five or more parking spaces. A special permit required for the proposed building professional office use within the Commercial Development District. The project has been sent to Horstley and Witten for peer review, and we were still awaiting comments, as we know, they won't start the review until after the holidays. The locusts process is located on the northly side of Willow Street, within an existing industrial commercial subdivision to the southwest of Route one fourteen. There's several commercial uses in the vicinity, including Jasmine Plaza and the Stop and Shop. Access to the sites off one fourteen being the entrance to Willow's Professional Park. The homes at Meadowwood Drive are located to the west, approximately three hundred feet away, property line to property line, the proposed work being greater than five hundred feet from the nearest dwelling on Meadowwood. The site was permitted two times previously by another owner applicant. Work has been started, but never completed. The locust property, property is currently vacant, overgrown with invasive species, and the vacant undeveloped stretch of... and the vacant undeveloped stretch of Willow Street, which is down in the back corner of the development, so to speak, being so vacant, is turned into sort of a dumping ground for people, illegal dumping. Since taking ownership, the current owner applicant has removed a significant amount of trash from the area and tries to maintain the, police area as much as possible to keep the area clean. In the site plan, the applicant's proposing a 6,667 square foot building on a 3.34 acre parcel of land. The proposed building meets all applicable setbacks and zoning requirements. 20 spaces of surface parking are provided, excuse me. Got a little bit of a cold. 20 spaces of surface parking provided inclusive of an accessible van space. A screen dumpster area is provided at the end of a proposed emergency vehicle turnaround. Utilities are already stuffed into the site, and a plan to be used to service the property with miserable water and sewer. We've received comments from the building inspector, DPW, and Public Safety. The most substantive comment was from the fire department regarding the ability to maneuver the larger ladder truck in the site. We performed a SWIP path analysis with a computer program we have using the dimensions of the truck they provided. It shows the truck can turn around on the site. That's been submitted to the fire department for their review. They had two other minor conditions which we agreed to, one for a safety plan before construction, one for a lockbox in the site, where we found both those conditions. The proposed building. Can come at a later date if you so wish to discuss the building further. The proposed building is intended to be similar in style to the recently constructed earthworks office at the corner 114 in Sharpe and Spahn Road, guessing, you know, the type of building we're looking for. The floor plan is designed to accommodate up to five tenant spaces, but other than the billing and sales office for the current applicant, Mr. Grasso's home improvement business, no other end users have been determined. As far as stormwater, as previously indicated, the project out to Horstley and Witten for a peer review. The site has been graded to direct surface runoff from a low point near the turnaround dumpster area and flows into a sediment for bay through a treatment swale and then into an extended detention basement for treatment of a presumed 85% TSS removal. That's out behind the building. This treatment drain also provides peak flow mitigation resulting in a decrease in peak rate of runoff in the site in the 2, the 10, the 25, and 100-year design storms. Overall, the site's been designed to comply with the Massachusetts Stormwater Management Standards. There's minor disturbances proposed within the flood zone in Mosquito Brook, which resulting in approximately 34 cubic feet of fill along the swale area beside the parking lot. To compensate for that, we are creating 54 cubic feet of compensatory storage out towards the front along the parking spot areas. As far as traffic, the proposed project's not a significant traffic generator. The IT trip generation estimates for the project results in approximately 97 trip ends per day, with 18 AM peak hour trips and 22 PM peak hour trips. As indicated earlier, access through the signalized intersection of Willow Street at 114. Mass DOT maintains car counts immediately southeast of the intersection, and the proposed increase in traffic is less than 1% per day, approximately 1.3% in the AM and PM peak. Mass DOT standard for the need for a full traffic study is when the increase in traffic exceeds 5%. The project is well below that threshold. The landscaping, we're requesting a waiver from the planning board to not have the landscape plan by a landscape architect. This because the prevalence of invasive species and the need for wetland restoration and planting plan was developed by the project's wetland scientist and the in-house wetland botanist. Plantings were selected to improve wetland function, habitat, and forage opportunities for wildlife. I open up to questions at this point.
Can you tell me about the wetland replication that's going to be needed? Where that, where that's going to be done and what it's going to be?
There is some ILSF, and to compensate for that, to the left side of the building as you look at it, we're taking what is ILSF and actually extending the BVW out, which will have a higher benefit to, sorry.
Can you give us, what do those acronyms stand for?
There's isolated vegetated wetland on the site, which is under the local bylaw, and we're replacing that with bordering vegetated wetland, which has a higher value as far as a wetland system, as far as treatment and wildlife. The isolated vegetated wetland in the middle of the site was created from the previous disturbances. When you look back at the original permitting, there was no isolated vegetated wetland there. They went in, did some site disturbances, and created lots of little pockets, which have kind of, over the last few years, developed into one larger area. So, we're looking to replicate that area by creating more BVW, which is the bordering vegetated wetland.
Any other initial questions, comments?
Can you talk about the drainage and the water table and so forth? And just which way the water flows in the general topography?
On the site, we're taking all the water from the parking area and flowing back towards the right corner of the building, so to speak. There's a small detention for bay there, which gives some treatment. Then a treatment swale, so the water will flow around the building and then into just a pond behind the building, and then it'll flow from there into the wetland.
So represented by these arrows?
I mean, isn't the, sort of the gating issue here is that a large portion of the parcel is, is wetland and it's wet? And I mean, so you're saying all your calculations, we're going to increase the rate of runoff? Is that?
Decrease the rate of runoff.
Yeah.
Yes, correct. That's by having the swale and the detention pond in the, behind the building. We'll store all the water and slowly release it.
Okay. Jean, where do we stand with peer review?
Literally was sent this morning to peer review. Her response was she couldn't start working on it till after January 4th. The applicant has conceded that he understands the situation, given the holidays and vacations and whatnot, so. Once she gets this, it's an unusual site, for sure.
Yes, agreed.
I anticipate her going back and forth for quite a bit.
Okay. No, and I mean, obviously, I think we'll want input from conservation as well, so. Okay. All right.
I just have a question to back up to the gentleman via butter. So, if you don't mind coming up for a sec. You're at Cara Drive. And you own, Jean, can you go back to maybe page two? When is the kind of overview? And what, what property do you own on Turnpike? Just so I can, so we can understand here.
There's a better picture of when you have the outline of the property.
Is there a better oversight?
I have one with all the lots.
Yeah.
On the application, there was one with the lots.
The one that like had 30 feet and everything, that was, that had all of the, the lives carved out on.
Scott, we'll see you on Turnpike again, Scott. Scott, six what, Turnpike, 640?
651. 651.
651?
It was just, previously, there was a pretty good map.
Did you say 651?
Yeah, I thought there was one in the presentation.
There you go.
All right. So where, that's the proposed, and that's the abutting lot?
Exactly, correct.
And what, what is the current use of that lot?
A residence. There's a residence, which we've been trying to utilize as a commercial property for decades. And we were told by this board, John can attest to this. See, John was up there fighting us every step of the way, telling us our property was zoned, couldn't be zoned commercially because it was, abutted, the wetlands, John. Abutted. How many times you told us, John, you told us many times, it's on film, John, so let's not deny it. You told us a million times, John, our property abutted the wetlands. Abutted the wetlands. No, sir. Our property abutted the wetlands and that we couldn't build on it. Our property has more uplands than Vinnie will ever have. And now, and now if Vinnie wants to build on his uplands, I really know a problem with that. We have a tremendous opportunity, though, he's not going to build unilaterally. We have, we have an opportunity with the Route 114 commercial corridor coming down the pipeline to finally plan and plan this out properly to make sure that the aggrieved homeowners on Route 114, who have watched every single type of commercial development be built around their homes, finally get the same chance as all the other developers who come before this board. That's what this is about. Fairness, equity, being treated the same.
I, I agree with, I agree with you in that, in that point. In the point of the proposed project, is the, is it coming from your previous interactions with the town or with the boards, the push maybe against the proposed project?
Sure, sure. No, no, I respect that. That's an excellent question. Unilaterally, that project alone will probably flood the existing land that we have adjacent to Vinnie's. Again, as I pointed out last time, he's going to pop that down. That, that fill is going to disperse all the wetlands that is there towards, not just going to, it's not going to be swale that's going to protect the water from going anywhere. It's going to go into our basement. It's going to go onto the, the property that exists, right there where that arrow is, that abuts further over. Yep, right there, keep going, right there. That land right there will forever be changed. It's the same exact land as Vinnie's going to be building on. We deserve to be treated exactly the same.
So, can I follow up on Chris's question then? So, I guess my question for you then is, because your initial point was that you didn't get noticed, and we can look into that. Is, is, do you have concerns about this project itself? Or is it that you don't feel that this project should be approved because a similar project that you had was not approved? I guess that's what I'm trying to figure, because that's, you know, and that's precedent setting somehow. I mean, I don't know anything about that other previous one. I have concerns about this project, just as a project, with the wetlands and things like that. Frankly, I don't really have very many concerns of this as a small, personal office property. That doesn't, the traffic, the issues, that doesn't bother me. The flooding of neighbors, the effect on abutting properties such as that, I have significant concerns about. What you're talking about, about commercial development, I don't really have a concern. But again, I don't know any of the history about the other project, nor could, I think we, I don't think we could really consider it in evaluating this. And I don't know what rights, if any, a denial or a approval would have on an application you potentially could make in the future, with all that being said. So, my question comes down to, do you have concerns about an approval to this project based on wetlands, flooding, and impact to your property?
Me?
Yes.
Yeah, I bet you I do.
Okay.
You bet you I do. When done unilaterally. When done unilaterally, because we, no, no. I'm just telling you what's going on, sir. If you ask me a question, I'm giving you an answer. It might not be the answer you want to hear, but it's the answer. If you want, if you want to do it right, again, we have an opportunity. The whole project, Route 114 is coming right down the pike. DOT, DEP are there now. You're there, the planning, the Conservation Commission's there. Let's do it right. Let's get everyone together at a table, say this is what we can do to improve the town, to improve the lives of the homeowners that have been aggrieved now for decades, held hostage almost on Route 114, as every single type of other commercial development has been built around them. Let's do it together. Let's just make a sound planning decision.
I don't, I don't understand what you mean by unilaterally.
Well, unilaterally is when one person does something alone, that's unilaterally. So, if he does it alone, that's not a good idea, because it's going to flood out of land. Many developers have come before the town, as is seen by the $30 million in flood damage that have occurred, who came before this board. I'm sure everyone acted in good faith and said, oh yeah, the engineering works done perfectly. Nothing's going to flood. $30 million later, we have a big problem in our town. Waverly Road is recent flooded. I'm sure all the engineers up there on Wood Lane told everyone, oh yeah, there's not going to be a problem on Waverly Road or anywhere else. It's going to work out perfectly. No one's going to get flooded. We have to have an improvement project now on Waverly Road, because there's potholes and people's land is getting.
Bilaterally, I assume you mean by somehow incorporating.
A plan, a plan.
A plan for what?
A plan for to utilize the homes on Route 114 in a commercial fashion that is consistent with all of the other properties. You're going to, what's going to happen, sir, is, sir, so what's going to happen is on Route 114, the state's coming down the highway. The three houses up at Chestnut Green Office Park are being taken by eminent domain. Those properties are going to be utilized commercially. That leaves about four or five other houses that could be used commercially also and should be used commercially. Our houses are at the end of those homes. There's two houses, myself and my friend, and my neighbor, Oscar. For decades, as I pointed out, we've been trying to get these properties used commercially. We've been given every excuse under the sun as to why we couldn't be doing something. Again, we have legitimate uplands, and we were told we couldn't do something. There are no uplands here.
What is your, what is your zone, Doug?
Zone, what is, I didn't know what is zone anymore.
CDD1.
CDD1, same thing.
I don't want to get in and litigate this, but suffice it to say, there's another side of the story that's completely different from what Mr. Hager is saying. If we want to go through it now, we can go through it now, we can go through it some of the time, but I don't want to do it now. I think he's leaving a lot of the story out.
I don't think so, John.
Which were complicated and that, I think we ought to stick solely on this application in front of this, because that's all that is.
John, may I ask a question? Is there a reason why, I have a question, I have a question for John, John.
No, you can ask me a question.
I will. Could you ask, could you please ask John why for decades he told us that we couldn't build on the wetlands, and tonight he hasn't mentioned anything up to Vinnie or his engineer as to a single thing about the wetlands? Why he's like building in the wetlands, not abutting them, John, in the wetlands, John. He's building in the wetlands.
Well, I, I'm asking him about, I don't, again, we have one application in front of us, and I don't know how that we could make that into a multi-application, but I, obviously, well, that may happen, but that's going to be based on the merits of the application, which I'm not sold on right now. And, and we haven't heard enough about yet to say whether we can, can, can go forward with. But it, I'm going to take from you that you have concerns about flooding onto your property and onto the other property, because frankly, it seems like you're trying to leverage this board into doing some sort of approval on your property by denying this property.
I would be into the board planning, the planning board to planning. That would be definitely a good idea, I think.
Okay.
Instead of hodgepodge allowing Super Stop and Shop to be filled in, hodgepodge allowing the cow wash in the middle of the wetlands to be filled in, hodgepodge to allow this property to be filled in. That's, that's how you're going to do it.
We plan by zone, most of our planning is by zoning, and so if you're suggesting we zone your property differently, we can look into that.
I'm suggesting we utilize it the same, sir. The rug under your feet is the same as the rug over here. The rug, the land on Vinnie's property is the same as the land over on my property. The same, fairness, equity, sir.
Then make an application.
I know, sir, why don't we make a plan? This is the planning board.
Then you have to talk with, then you have to talk with, then you have to talk with Mr. Grasso.
Sir, I'm talking on the planning board.
I can't make a plan for your property.
Well, you should.
I can't. We're not legally allowed to make a plan for your property.
We have, we have all sorts of people, paid professionals, that do this. Just to do things knee-jerk reaction and to try and like say this is good planning is not good planning at all. We have a very good opportunity to plan. Again, we have a whole project coming down the highway. DOP is going to be spending $30 million down there. Let's take advantage of it. Let's do it, all together, instead of this, this is not right. This is not the way you do things consistently. Fairness, equity point again, it's not right. You can't tell one person one thing for 20, 30 years and then allow someone else to do something. It would be absolute miscarriage of justice if you allowed this guy to build commercially in back of our house without us helping on board. That's all I have to say.
Seems like it would help. Okay. All right. Sure, anyone can make a comment, if you want to come up.
Linda Perone, 65 Meadowwood Road in North Andover. So, we are not directly abutting, but as you can see, Meadowwood Road is to the lower left of that picture, the circle. So, the Meadowwood Development was developed in 1993 and on, and the North Andover Business Park, which includes Flagship Road and Willow Street, was built just about the same time. So.
It was actually built before. It was, it was approved like at least 10 years before.
It was approved 10 years before? Okay. I apologize. So, so we are neither a PRD nor a 40B in our neighborhood. So, when we go for a walk. a 40B in our neighborhood. So, when we go for a walk, or walk to Stop and Shop, or walk to Ward Reservation, we go through Willow Street. Willow Street's had a lot of problems in that loop up there. And, so Amy Maxner has been working with me, and I've been sending pictures in for that. And so I, I do agree...
What kind of problems? When you say problems?
A lot of dumping problems. Right now, there's two sofas out there. But it might be big screen TVs. There's an awful lot of yard waste dumping. There's a lot of gravel construction dumping. Oil, right at the corner there, the lower left-hand corner, last week I found a tire and two oil containers in that. So, it's an unoccupied loop. And as an unoccupied loop, it's beautiful, but it's dumped on every other day. There's something that I'm, I'm sending in on the, the report. Once a year, we do the townwide cleanup, and we've, we've cleaned up and some years, 50 big huge bags. So, it's a difficult area in that it's not occupied, but at the same time, it's all wetlands. Today, I went out and it's just, it's just soaked. So, we have an issue in this, in this whole loop, in that to come from the Flagship Road, uh, Will, excuse me, Willow Street 114 intersection. That intersection was built by the folks who developed Flagship Road. So, they paid for it. They paid for it because the town insisted that they pay for it, so that the traffic coming up was, had a safe intersection. Flagship, Flagship Road and Will, excuse me, Flagship Road, Willow Street were exits across from Mill, Mill Road. So, that intersection is supposed to be the main entrance, but it's not. It's, it's, it's probably the majority, but a good number of folks who are coming to work at Bacon Joy or at Doian's, which is now in the Willow Street, just off of Willow Street, they'll come in through, through Jasmine Plaza. And Jasmine Plaza is no longer, sorry, the, the entranceway is no more than 20 feet, especially with these big rains. It's no more than 20 feet from Mosquito Brook. That's, that is a, is a, one part of Mosquito Brook. So, there's debris coming in from the, from any, anybody who's throwing debris out of their, their car, going to Dunkin' Donuts, that's ending up in Mosquito Brook there. Then the folks who are working at Doian's and Boston, uh, excuse me, Boston Coffee Cake, which we, we do appreciate all the businesses in there, but they'll come in through Jasmine Plaza, take a right, and then they'll come around that loop at, at huge speeds and, and toss whatever they can out of, out of the cars. So, when Mr. Grasso's business is built, that traffic is most likely going to continue. That's putting a real pressure on Mosquito Brook. Today, today I found two chairs, right, say, you know, 10, 20 feet from, from the brook.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
I, I get it exactly what they do. Do the people that own Jasmine Plaza try to stop that? Because that's got to be an adverse impact on them, because their parking lot's become a roadway.
So, there, there's an attempt to sell Jasmine Plaza right now. Jasmine Plaza, together with 80, Flagship Road is owned by one group, and they're attempting to sell that property now. They don't seem to bother with it. I've called in a couple times, and Amy Maxner has asked them to solve that, to, to clean it up, to clean it up, basically. There's some Beaver that have built dams in that area. But my biggest concern is that whoever's coming into Mr. Grasso's new building, they're going to add to that. Having, having a business there on that wetland, I think, will affect Mosquito Brook. It will affect, because there's water that goes right around that corner that goes into the brook.
So, so a couple of things. One, I mean, I think that's why this needs, obviously needs to go through Conservation, and frankly, I think it would have a difficult time passing the Conservation Commission. I think in terms of the dumping, what I think what the applicant is arguing, that having a, a business there with people actually coming in and out is it would be a deterrent to the, the dumping aspect of things, you know?
I would hope so. I would hope so. But if you, excuse me, to interrupt.
No, go ahead.
If you yourself drive along that whole loop, Willow Street and Flagship, you'll find that all along there, people have, people are dumping. It's just the big items that get put over on that Willow Street loop. So, it, it might be, it was, was big screen, big screen TVs last month.
I mean, definitely an issue. I just, I don't know that it's Mr. Grasso's particular issue.
Well, having a business there might, might help.
Right.
It might prevent it. But the other thing that I wanted to say was when this was all developed, the town was built, the town was growing, and it was good to have new businesses in. And I'm sure that was an era in which it was very positive to, to build business. But this is all wetlands, and even Mr. McGregor across the street on 114 has attempted numerous times to, to get building permits in. He was hoping to have a drive-through bank, but his, his, that property is stuck between wetlands.
Yeah.
And they're, they're all wetlands in here. So, that loop right there, to me, it was nice that Mr. Osgood and Mr. Webster could build back there and could create that, but it's going through a wetland. It's, it's a street through a wetland. So, I'm sorry. I apologize. I'm a little bit emotional about this, because we see that trash every day. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Um, well, I mean, to me, it seems like this project has some significant hurdles, but we're going to hear it out and gather more evidence and at some point make a decision.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, the Conservation stuff is paramount, and if it's as dodgy as it appears to be, it'll fall out that way. That's a little bit why I asked the question about the water table and drainage and so forth, because that gets at the very issue. And a peer review hasn't looked at it yet. I mean, it seems to me that they add a perspective to the Conservation Commission. It's, it's an independent, so we're going to have two sets of eyes that are looking on, on the water issues.
Okay.
So, Conservation meets tomorrow night, and peer review won't be for several more weeks. So, I don't, I don't know if you want to choose to continue.
Well, I mean, let's say, and, and if, if Conservation does in fact, you know, either close or deny, then either the applicant has to reapply to Conservation and renotice or go through the DEP process, and neither of which is going to be a, something quick going to happen there. So, we're at least another month out, most likely, before anything happens at Conservation.
So, Conservation's already closed their hearing, because they had to do the timed line?
Right. So, they're going to vote. So, they closed it with no evidence.
And tomorrow, the applicant didn't appear at their hearing.
Right.
There was all kinds of questions that were open, and so they closed it, and tomorrow they're going to render a decision.
Right. So, assuming they deny it, which seems like they would have to at that point, either the applicant can go back and go before Conservation, or they can try their hand at DEP if DEP allows that. Whatever the process is going to be, it's going to take some time. And then our process is going to take some time. So, when are our next meeting dates?
January 2nd, and January 16th, February 6th, and February 20th.
So, it would seem to make sense to me to schedule it for January 16th and see where we're at with peer review, see where we're at with any Conservation issues, and then take it up again then. Is it 16, January 16th, or would you prefer the February date? I'm okay with either.
Yeah. My, my thought, and I don't want to waste the board's time. I imagine that if, as a witness reviews it, starts a review on the 4th, by the time we get comments, any ability to respond, it'd be tough to get done by the 16th.
That's fine. No, no, I...
I think we should push it off till...
That's fine. So, February 6th? Is that a meeting date? Or the 13th?
The...
6th?
You meet on the 6th and the 20th.
Okay, so let's do February 6th. And if, if there's still stuff outstanding, or you think that it should be continued, just file a motion to continue it. That's fine. I just want to give you the opportunity to come back if there's information to provide.
Yes, I appreciate it. So, that's what we're expecting.
All right. So, let's do February's, I need to put it in my calendar. Uh, February 6th. I'm still just putting things in my calendar. Let me set the date. Okay. Continued, are any, I'm sorry, Jean, are there any comments? Any comments that have come in online, email? Someone just writing the date, or do you want to make comments? Just write the date? Okay.
No.
Okay.
I do have a question.
All right. So, we'll go, we'll continue this 189 Willow Street until February 6th. At that point, hopefully, we can hear from peer reviewers, and we can get an update as to where things stand on the Conservation Front.
Yep.
Okay. Very good. All right. Continue until February 6th, 2024. Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. MBGA multifamily housing overlay district draft bylaw. What do you want to do on this tonight, Jean?
Can I just get a copy of the short...
Sure.
Happy holidays, guys. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all.
All right. So, the draft bylaw has been updated and redlined for your package tonight. Essentially, just reflecting comments that were made at the last meeting and a couple of edits that I had mentioned that I had wanted to propose.
Okay.
So, just flipping through quickly, hold on. They're of very minor nature, to be honest. The first of which I had mentioned on the applicability. I wanted to state that if a developer chooses to come in under this bylaw, then they're choosing to come in and the rest of the bylaw does not apply, other than where specified within this bylaw. And so we do specify if it's a special permit, they got to follow site plan review. We do specify if it's inclusionary zoning component, that they still need to comply with inclusionary zoning, with the exception of requiring a special permit, but all the other criteria still applies. Those are the two main ones. And then the appeal, it was kind of redundant. So, the appeal period was mentioned here. It's now mentioned later in the bylaw, both the appeals specific to a special permit and the appeals specific to a plan review, which is at the building permit time. And special permit follows 40A. We added solar energy systems. So, again, if they propose solar here, we point them to the solar bylaw, and they need to comply with the solar bylaw. Adult uses, you wanted to specify halls and clubs, so we call out adult uses shall expressly prohibited, including but not limited. These are uses that are defined in our bylaw, so I called out each defined use. And then, again, that's the inclusionary zoning provision, except the requirement of a special permit. And we decided to delete the provision of prohibited uses. Okay, you want to add the special permit granting authority may include conditions regarding post-project studies, such as parking monitoring, photometric studies. So, these are the ones that historically you conditioned through site plan review for people to come back.
Okay, great.
Take a... I'm still waiting. I'm working with MVPC on trying to identify parking for restaurants, so that one didn't get resolved. For sustainable, sustainable design, we talked about giving design guidelines for sustainable. And so, this is what, I worked with Gemma. Gemma actually suggested these from another town, I think it was Acton. But these are design standards, and as you know, they're, we ask them to comply with the design standards. They're not mandatory. They can ask for waivers from them. So, these are all the sustainable design guidelines.
Okay.
Again, just a typo there. Restaurant I just spoke to, we're still waiting on a parking requirement. And then on the, so we talked about bonuses. Just have a couple of cautions here. So, on the density provisions, Eton, I think you had mentioned that maybe at the North Andover Mall, we want three stories 35. Sorry. We want three stories 35 unless it's commercial first floor. I would just caution, and Market Basket will be coming before you very soon for a modification to their site plan for some renovation project they're doing. And the site plan just kind of struck me. So, the floodplain runs essentially from 114 almost to the front of their building. So, thinking of that and a potential, if there were to be a residential development separate from the existing footprint, there's potential floodplain implications. And so what would that mean for potentially a first-floor parking garage? It's just, it struck me, like, I don't imagine it would be underground parking garage, but the potential for a first floor. So, do we want to have any type of caution for that?
So, three stories 35 feet of commercial first floor or parking garage, you're saying?
Yeah. That, I mean...
I mean, that seems, that seems fine. That seems, I mean, it seems like a good idea.
Because the last time they came through, I forget exactly, but they cut out like 14 or 14 parking spaces, and you allowed common parking facility special permit.
One of the things I was thinking is that, like, so like, I was down there today, right? And I went to the bookstore, and then I went to the grocery store, which was great. And they have, you know, salon, they have restaurants. It would be, it really would be nice if you could go down from your apartment and go and get a haircut, or go to a restaurant, or go to a book club, or go to a bookstore, go to, go to the Market Basket, get on a bus and go to the train station. I actually think it works really well. And then I was thinking, well, what if you wanted to have, you know, take away some of those parking spaces and put some little parklifts or something like that? You could do that if you moved some of the parking, now that you're mentioning it, like, under in a garage. You could actually make more space for greens and stuff like that. Again, I know that they don't necessarily have any current plans for it, but I really think it does make a whole heck of a lot of sense to actually do. And if you do, then yeah, I think, I mean, I think that makes sense, Jean, what you're suggesting.
Doesn't that first-floor parking area also improve resiliency in the event of flooding?
Mm-hmm.
Because all of the finished areas are elevated, especially in that location. That seems to me to be nothing but a good option.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah. And as far as mixed use, I mean, we were trying to certainly get a mixed use, but we'd have a mixed use in this environment.
Correct.
So, maybe we want to substitute the commercial for a parking garage, because...
Well, can you do, you could do either, right?
You could do either.
Yeah. Just put it as either.
So, similar to the Mills, I mean, Avalon, we kind of pushed them for a mixed use component, but the owners, which RCG at the time said, we have the mixed use. It's, it's a whole complex in total.
Yeah. So, I mean, I'd say give it, give it in either.
I mean, I don't know if we want to get too prescriptive on this, but do we want to say an enclosed parking garage? Because like, in other words, is that, because there's a scenario that you can have a parking garage that's completely open, and then you've just got this building on stilts with parking underneath. So, I'm just, I don't know if we want to get that prescriptive on it, but...
Well, I think it would still come for you. It's still going to come for a special permit. I think under that examining of special permit, yeah.
What was that, John?
I said, I know exactly where Sean's going with that, and sometimes a bottom-floor parking doesn't look much better than, you know, just on stilts. It's just, unless it's screened and taken care of, it can, it can be pretty mediocre.
Yeah, that's good. Yeah, good.
But you could do it. You could, it doesn't take a lot to make it better to, yeah, buffer it off.
I'm thinking, I'm trying to figure out, remember where I've seen some, but I've seen some that now that I think of it is partly screened but partly open on the stilts. But my impression in looking at those examples was it looked pretty good.
Yeah. And I, and I mean, if, if you tuck the side where you do that around, that's the side that's not most visible. Like, there's one over in Andover that, that's like that, that you wouldn't notice it because it's in the back, but that's the way.
I'm thinking of one in Salem, where part of the open area is visible in front, and it just is, it's done well.
Yeah.
Yeah. Good.
So, our other caution is on the density provisions. So, as you know, we're being asked to zone for 1,200 units approximately, just shy of 1,200 units. So as you know, we're being asked to zone for 1,200 units approximately, just shy of 1,200 units. We are dealing with 90 acres of land because of the scale of these two sites. And so if we were to allow a five-unit density bonus, I mean, you're talking another 450 units. And so my recommendation would really to be kind of scale that back to potentially two additional.
Yeah.
But market factors are also gonna drive that. And so I'm not, I'm not saying anybody's gonna be able to, to get a bonus of two units because of just economic situations and setbacks and heights and things like that.
Okay.
My recommendation is just scale back to 17. It's still a bonus. It's still viable.
Yeah, yeah. Anton? Yeah, because when you think of it as, like, oh, five, that's not that many, but you know, over, over that many. Yeah, that makes sense.
And then I think the other changes were just minor in nature. It's minor. Housekeeping for the most part. And, and again, I guess that caution also goes, I know Gemma's been advocating for sustainability bonuses, and I think just having design guidelines gets us somewhere, and again, maybe not.
I think that's good for now.
It's a good starting point, yeah.
Let's see, maybe we can look that into somewhere else, or maybe, you know, down the line, we can, we can amend this once it's in place.
So again, I had mentioned, I moved the appeal period back, so I combined the two of them, depending on special permit versus plan review there. I think that's the last one. Yeah, so that's the last one.
Okay. Looks good.
So if everybody's comfortable with that, again, we hope to get it to the state, and then concurrently, you guys continue your review. I mean, if anything material comes up, we deal with it, but I don't think material changes are gonna affect.
So let's, I don't think you need to carry it every time unless there's something that we actually.
Yeah, we're around the corner from starting public hearings. I mean, that'll be February anyways.
Let's wait till then, or if we get feedback from the state before that.
Okay. So you're comfortable, we'll send it for them to start their review.
Yep.
Okay.
So we'll do the MassDOT, a little update from Peter. Could we put on for next agenda to do a Great Pond Road Steering Committee update? Because I saw you guys had some decisions, recommendations, and it'd be good. I want to talk about it, but it's not on the agenda, so let's talk about it next time.
Yeah.
So I'd like an update on that, because I saw the newspaper article. I was like, oh, this sounds interesting where this is going. So, and a real good study on putting together a group without having a set goal and decision in mind, and actually how that actually benefits you to actually have an open mind. So that's good.
Jean, can you include the?
Presentation.
PowerPoints that we used?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Fantastic. All right, Peter, tell us about the DOT meeting you want to.
So I just had a couple notes here.
Okay.
It was a good turnout. I don't know, maybe 40, 50 people. John Borgesi was there from DPW. Janice was there from the Select Board. So they said that they were at the 75% planning, but they also said that they had not yet started the right-of-way portion, which made me think, well, there may be some opportunity here, because they hadn't started that part of the project. DOT, and the DOT did a presentation. It was pretty good. They got a fair amount of questions. They responded well to them, I thought. DOT said that they will talk to their right-of-way group to include Andover Elm Street. I mean, they got what we were talking about. Jeff from Merrimack was very supportive of it, as he was here in that session. They did say that if we had not raised this, even though the right-of-way portion is just starting or not yet started, it would not have been included. It was not part of their planning so far. They were not guaranteeing that it will be, but it was pretty optimistic that it might be.
Or that they'll at least talk about it now, now it's on the.
Yes, and, wait a minute. So who's the engineer, Jeff, not Jeff Merrimack, Jeff?
Keteritz, BHP.
Yeah. So he was there, and there were suggestions made that he do a concept plan for how this extra lane or lanes work on Andover Elm. And he said he would do that. Now, it's not clear to me now where that will go and what effect it will happen. Certainly at that meeting, it sounded like there was agreement that, yeah, this is a good idea. Glad we heard about it now, or it would have been too late, and yeah, we're gonna have a concept plan. So it all sounds good, but I, I don't know where it's going from here. Jean, what are your thoughts about that concept plan, and who needs to get it, and where it needs to go?
Nothing other than I can ask him.
Thank you. Thank you. I think a follow-up would be helpful.
Yeah.
I mean, a lot of times they drew those, and then they'll have district meetings or meetings about the project, and they'll say, hey, look at this. What do you think? Can we do it? Can we not do it? I mean, it's interesting you talk about the right-of-way people, because usually, well, not usually, a lot of times their focus is on the taking of easements, so that's what the right-of-way is mostly about.
Yeah.
It's about finalizing up and taking whatever easements you need, whether they be temporary or permanent, and stuff like that.
But in this case, I mean, Jeff from Merrimack made comments very similar to he made, made here. He did not say, we will give you land.
Right.
But he did say, solving that backup there is as important, Merrimack College, as it is to the people who are stuck in those backups, and they want to be part of the solution.
Yeah.
So I, I think even though that is, I think, the case with the right-of-way, it's, oh, okay, jeez, you, there might be a way to do this? Great, let's put it in the plan, I think.
Okay. If, I mean, if they look at it, I mean, step one is looking at it, right?
Yeah.
Step one is, or getting it on their radar.
Right.
Done. Then looking at it, sounds like it's potentially happening, and then, you know, the powers that be making decisions. But that's great, that, that, the discussion here followed through to there. And now I think your question is valid, is what's the next follow-up?
I would love to hear something back from DOT, and I wonder if it's possible through your inquiry to Jeff to maybe ask if there's any path here where his concept plan also goes to DOT and that results in some type of feedback to us. We're an interested party.
Well, I mean, we did put that condition into that, so at least have that further discussion later on down the line. So, I mean, at least they'll talk about it, but yeah, but you're talking about sooner rather than later.
And, and I'm talking about get some feedback from those players.
Yeah.
Feedback from Jeff doing the concept plan, and feedback from DOT. For example, are you getting a copy of that concept plan? What do you think your actions will be? I don't know, just, I, I think if, if there's inquiries, it could help at this very early stage of trying to nurture the seedling.
Okay.
John, you look skeptical.
Yeah. No, I, I still, I try to figure out what, like, how those guys think.
DOT?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it seems like they're engineers by none, and that's all they care about. And, but yet again, it seems to me they don't always come up with the right solution. But normally, the.
I think it's an interesting mix of engineering and fiscal.
Yeah.
Right? Like, your engineer might say, this is the best thing, and then they say, how much is that gonna cost? Nope, we don't have that. So I don't know.
Like, I mean, the thing is, when we had our, the great consultant, we had one traffic, what was his name?
Jeffrey Dirk.
That guy was awesome.
Jeffrey Dirk.
Yeah.
Jeffrey Dirk.
And I remember he kept saying, like, oh, most of this project is just changing the signalization. And you know, for somebody who goes by there just about every day, the signalization's one of the biggest problems. It really is. And so I'm sitting there and saying, okay, that's an easy win. It's not gonna cost you $500 million. And then they're designing all these bike paths that nobody else is gonna use. We're gonna tear down the stone walls that everybody likes, and we're gonna end up with crap. And, you know, we don't get a second chance. When they're wrong on these bike paths, we don't get a second chance to put the, the stone walls back. So I have no confidence that they're gonna end up with a smart solution. I just don't, I.
That's why I get wary of the right-of-way. Sure, go ahead. We're just having a discussion. Sure.
I, I had a question because Mr. Point, I was also at that meeting. Again, Melinda Perom, 65 Meadowwood Road. I'm here for, again, Mosquito Brook and Willow Street area. So they will be putting in, from what I understand, the MassDOT will be putting in a larger pathway for the Mosquito Brook to go under Route 114. I had suggested to them, when they had asked for comments earlier, I had also talked about that Jasmine Plaza, again, being only 20 feet away from Mosquito Brook. And with the rain like yesterday, there's an awful lot of water going through. So I had asked them what would be a possibility of having, of moving a light so that Jasmine Plaza might not be backed up right against that brook? Because again, the pavement of parking lot is falling off into the brook.
In the back?
It's, it's towards the north, the north area. So it's, it's crumbling. And I've given Jean and also Amy Max to a presentation that I was hoping to make to the Conservation Committee about that, because if, if we're not taking care of Mosquito Brook where it is, where it starts, then we've got Fish Brook that's, you know, taking the, the blend of that. So I had asked the DOT if they would consider moving some of the, the lights so that we could get rid of the, that, that back parking lot and maybe have parking on the other side. Stop &amp; Shop has tons of empty parking on the other side of Jasmine Plaza. So I'm just trying to find a way to ask if we could take the pressure off of Mosquito Brook. We have four, well, we have two unsignaled entries into 114 right there. One is the car wash, and the other is Jasmine Plaza. And they're both, both heavily traveled. And there's a, there's three lanes of traffic that become two at, at that, that space. And I was wondering if a signal there.
A signal at Jasmine Plaza?
At Jasmine Plaza.
Problem is, it's so close to the other signal at.
Well.
At Hill, or at Chestnut?
It's close to the signal for Stop &amp; Shop.
Right.
The Stop &amp; Shop signal, if you're coming in, you have to cross all the pedestrian traffic coming into Stop &amp; Shop. So you've got cars and people walking across that traffic to get to the store.
Walking across from where? From?
Stop &amp; Shop parking.
Stop &amp; Shop parking lot. So you.
So are you saying to move the light for Stop &amp; Shop closer to Jasmine so that there would be no interference with the pedestrians?
That would be a benefit. Yeah. And it would slow also, it would also slow traffic going from Jasmine Plaza down to Hillside.
Yeah, but I think you need, on the hill coming down, I think you need a traffic light.
I mean, you already have, but these are separate tra, traffic lights.
Right, but I don't know that they would put traffic lights so close together.
The only way you could get somebody to put something that out of the box as part of this overall project, because you wouldn't do it separately. It's, the, the scandal would cost a, putting a thing.
Does the project go down this?
But, but what I'm saying is, what I think we're hearing, what I think is not adding a light, it's moving one, which would give more separation between the Stop &amp; Shop light and.
Yeah.
Chest, is that Chestnut that comes down there? No, Hillside, Hillside.
There's not, oh, oh, there's gonna be a light at Hillside, but there's not one there.
So, so people come down the hill.
On Chestnut.
And they hit the Stop &amp; Shop light, fine.
Yeah.
And then they take off, and you've got Jasmine Plaza, traffic coming in. You've got the st, the wash, the car wash coming in. And at nighttime, I don't know if you've ever, ever walked down that section of Route 114.
No.
But if you walk down that section, I've done it, and you'll see a dead, a dead deer.
Yeah.
Or a possum. They come across, because it's a, it's a beautiful wetland there. They'll come across, and they'll just get mowed over. So slowing down that traffic to the new Hillside light from Stop &amp; Shop would also be a benefit.
Yeah, I just know the intersection with Hillside is terrible. So that's the one I take almost every day.
Right.
It's awful. I just, yeah, it's the only way I can cut over to get to Andover, unless I go all the way to Stop &amp; Shop. No, yeah, that's just hurt.
Yeah, but the concern I have is for the wetlands, the wildlife that are crossing there.
Yeah.
And, and then Mosquito Brook, Mosquito Brook and the, and Jasmine Plaza. I mean, I encourage you to go over and look at the Jasmine Plaza parking lot, and it's just kind of deteriorating into.
No, I, I appreciate it. I, I mean, I think all different types of solutions, big and small, should be kind of looked at, but.
I agree with you, John. If it's not part of the project, I don't see a path.
Does the project, it doesn't go down that far, does it? Does the, does DOT probably go down that far?
The project goes to.
Goes to Willow?
It goes to, yeah, Wall Street, yeah. I had made the suggestion, knowing that the, you know, DOT's not gonna do it, but I wanted to just put that out.
Well, but sometimes if you ask for that, and they say no, well, then you can say, well, maybe can we put a retaining wall, you know, up here? Can you, can you do something smaller that might, you know, while you're building the road, can we, you know, fix the gravel here at the parking lot while you're doing new curb cuts or something like that? Sometimes a bigger ask can lead to a smaller ask that may be beneficial.
That's highly traveled. There's supposed to be two or three speed bumps in that Jasmine Plaza.
Yeah.
But didn't have left, so.
Okay, I appreciate your advocacy.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else for tonight? Do we get a motion to adjourn?
How about meeting minutes? Meeting minutes?
Meeting minutes, fine. Ken, thank you. Jean, can we approve the, motion to approve the meeting minutes from December 5th, 2023?
So moved second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We get a motion to adjourn?
So moved second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.